Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of November 12. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call Mrs. Thomas.
Trusty Willis, here. Trusty Harris. Harris Jones, here. Trusty Hyferman, here. Trusty Mason, here. Trusty Roman, here. Trusty Open, here. President Hofeld.
You're representing staff this evening to my left, our village manager Napoleon Haney, to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings, to the audience is right, our police chief Denise McGrath, finance director Amy Zakowski, economic and community development director Angela Miserys, public works director Josh Berman, and assistant village manager Terrence Akwa. In the very front row is our events manager, Marla Youngblood, Antonia Steinmiller, our event, excuse me, I have to get the title right, communications and specialist, and our IT manager Rick Wachowski. The minutes of October 22nd, comments or questions, trustee Willis? Trusty Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trusty Hyferman.
I have nothing.
Trusty Mason.
No.
Trusty Roman. Trusty Open.
Nothing.
We have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved, second.
It's been moved by trustee Open, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trusty Willis, aye. Trusty Harris Jones, aye. Trusty Hyferman, aye. Trusty Mason, aye. Trusty Roman, aye. Trusty Open, aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of $1,185,571.74. Comments or questions, trustee Willis? Trusty Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trusty Hyferman. Trusty Mason.
Nothing.
Trusty Roman. Trusty Open.
No questions.
We have a motion to approve the claims list, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Open. Roll call, please.
Trusty Willis, aye. Trusty Harris Jones, aye. Trusty Hyferman, aye. Trusty Mason, aye. Trusty Roman, aye. Trusty Open, aye.
The claims list is approved. Of that $1,185,000 claims list, three items comprised the majority of that list. Our payments to the city of Chicago Heights for water was $332,000. One month's village employees' health insurance, $256,000. And our payment to Thorn Creek Sanitary District was $90,000. That amounted to $678,000, almost 60% of that claims list. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Liz Farmacki with South Suburbs for Green Space. I'm back again to talk about the toxic pollution discharging into the Northwest Pond of the Prairie Lakes at Isaac Walton. It's been three weeks since I told the board about the pollution, and apparently no action has been taken other than the village manager following up with the IEP A the day after I spoke. A few points I want to take a moment to clarify for the board. The Prairie Lakes are owned by the Village of Homewood. They are leased to the Isaac Walton Foundation. The MS4 permit that allows stormwater drainage is given by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to the Village of Homewood. The Village of Homewood is responsible for monitoring and preventing illicit discharge from the stormwater drains per the MS4 permit. In 2022, the IEP A explicitly told the Village of Homewood's Director of Public Works that the pond owner is responsible for testing. I just gave you a letter that the Board of Isaac Walton spent more than a month drafting and getting finalized that explains the Brian testing results, showing how critical it is that this toxic discharge is stopped immediately. This letter helpfully explains the toxins present and compares levels in urban and suburban areas to the amount of toxins found in the Northwest Pond. This letter was sent to the Director of Public Works on September 16th with the direction to forward to the appropriate village officials. The letter was apparently in the wrong format, and the Director of Public Works did nothing and did not notify the Isaac Walton Board President Brinkman that the format was unacceptable. Three weeks later, when Brinkman followed up, the Director told him the format was incorrect. This shows a lack of urgency to a very critical issue and a complete disregard for the good work the Board of Isaac is doing. After the format was corrected, it was forwarded to the village manager on October 7th. It does not appear the letter that shows the seriousness and the scope of this issue was shared with the village board. This letter was first sent two months ago this week. So I think it's past time that village trustees have a copy of this letter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? If not, meet the merchants, Ms. Miserys.
Good evening. Tonight I have Deanna Taylor, who is the founder and CEO of Mom Care Oasis. Want to come up and tell us if you can get through?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deanna Taylor. I am the founder, CEO, and executive coach at Mom Care Oasis, and we offer wellness solutions for busy moms and busy organizations. And so for busy moms, what we do, we help you to prioritize your self-care, the S-word. And what we do, we help you with life coaching. We also provide a way for you to prioritize self-care through our newest product, Mommy Needs a Minute. It is an emotional self-care kit for busy moms. And then for busy organizations, we do business as MCO, executive wellness, and we bring wellness to your senior leaders. And what we focus on is executive coaching. We have team-building retreats. And then we do wellness workshops, which also include how do you stress to your advantage, how to build better trust in your teams, and a myriad of other services that we provide. And so before I leave, I just wanted to give you with three small tips that combine together for the word act. So can you say act? Act. It's okay, that was a little weak. Can you say act? Act. Good. So A stands for acknowledge what you see. This is the busy time of holiday hustle and bustle, a lot of stress. We're all feeling it on more than one reason, for more than one reason. And A says acknowledge what you see. Stop being afraid to say it out loud. It doesn't make you go away. So once you acknowledge what's going on in your body, your mind, your family, then C, you can change one thing. There's something you can change. So if work is completely overwhelming you, then maybe this week you leave the office for lunch. If you can do that one small act, you can start to pivot and change the way you operate your business. And then finally, T, is take time to rest. Often people think rest is a waste of time. Rest is how your body competes for a longer period of time without burning out. So we are here in the community, supporting busy moms, supporting busy organizations. And just recently, we were featured on the Jennifer Hudson Show last month, and we received a $10,000 grant with the work that we do. So we are here for you. And so thank you so much for the privilege of speaking.
How should people contact you?
Yes, please. So you can contact us directly, momcareoasis.com. If you're a busy mom or have a busy mom or want to bless her in some way. And then if you're looking for wellness for your leadership team, mcoexecutivalness.com.
Okay, thank you for being here. Old Sub Office, Ms. Zakowski.
Tonight, we are administering the ultimate of office to Jamie Basquas for the position of full-time finance clerk in our finance department. Jamie's first day was on October 28th. She came to the village with a background in healthcare, but was looking to transition into the world of finance. Her previous roles in healthcare provided her with organizational customer service and analytical skills that made her a great candidate for the position. She will complete her Bachelor of Arts in Finance from Western Governors University later this month, and she is eager to put her education to use as she begins her career in municipal finance. We're very excited to have Jamie as part of our team and look forward to how she'll be able to contribute to the department if you'd like to come forward.
They didn't tell you this part of it.
Hi, my name is Jamie Basquas. Having been appointed to, having been appointed to the position of finance clerk, the position of finance clerk for the Village of Homewood, for the Village of Homewood. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of Illinois. Constitution of the state of Illinois. And the municipal ordinances. And the municipal ordinances. Of the Village of Homewood. Of the Village of Homewood. And that I will faithfully discharge and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as finance clerk. My duties and my input to the best in my ability, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're welcome. Kate McGrath.
Officer Morrison, can you join me up here, please? I'd like to introduce Daniel Morrison, who was hired as a full-time police officer effective Sunday, October 13th, 2024. Officer Morrison was hired for the position through the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Entry Level Police Officer Application Program. Officer Morrison graduated Benito Juarez Community High School in Chicago in 2019. He studied computer science at St. Xavier University and criminal justice at Moraine Valley Community College. Officer Morrison previously served as a correctional officer from August of 2022 to May of 2023. In May of 2023, he was hired as a police officer for the Harvey Police Department and attended the City of Chicago Metropolitan Recruit Training Program. He graduated and received his state certification in October 2023 and began his service as a police officer for Harvey PD. We are very happy to welcome Officer Morrison to the Homewood Police Department and the village. Among other family and friends, he is joined by his wife Christina, four-year-old daughter Arlette, and his parents Pete and Lisa Morrison. You would step up by a round.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Daniel Morrison.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
Police officer for the Village of Homewood.
Police officer for the Village of Homewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the.
Constitution.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances.
And the municipal ordinances.
For the Village of Homewood.
For the Village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As police officer.
As police officer.
For the Village of Homewood.
For the Village of Homewood.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Presentations, Ms. Youngblood.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm here to present our Fall Fest. So every year, we have a Fall Fest Chili Cook-Off, and every year we choose to partner with a non-for-profit organization in town in order to raise donations for the organization. This year, our organization was Homewood School District 153's PTA. And I would love to present the check to Lisa. Hi. Here. And this year, we had over 18 Chili Cook-Off entries and saw over 500 people to give the donations, as well as our pumpkin patch. And we were able to raise $2,310 for it. So it was a very successful year. Thank you guys so much. They also did volunteer and came out to the pumpkin patch for us. They took all of the donations in themselves as well. So we really do like to partner with organizations. So next year, if you are interested, please just let us know, and we can talk about it.
On behalf of Homewood PTA, thank you so much. That was really, really generous.
And we have a little fun big check.
For the photo, ma'am.
No, no. Yeah, I'm fine.
You're not gonna go like.
More one way to say it.
Okay, Lord. The Citizen Civics Academy Award, Ms. Steinmiller.
Good evening, everyone. So the Village of Homewood launched a new program this spring called Citizen Civics Academy. And we invite residents and business owners of Homewood to come to the village and get a behind-the-scenes look at your government. This spring, we had a total, can you flip them? Thank you, Terrence. We had, can't read my own, 18 people signed up this spring. This fall, we had 41 people sign up and 33 people completed the program. So our goal is to do this program twice a year. And so a little bit more background, week one, residents were invited to come to Village Hall to learn about the intro of government. Week two, they went to the fire department and spent time with our fire chief, learning about the fire department and our building division. Week three, they went back to Village Hall to learn about our finance department. Week four, they traveled to Public Works. Week five, they were back here, learning economic and community development. And week six, they finished at the police department. So it was a great program. Thank you to all of you who are coming. We're here to recognize those of you who are able to make the board meeting. So I have, and when I call your name, please stay up here so we can take a picture at the end. Okay? Adriana Rivera. Angela Allen. Annika Todd. Christine Cotter. Diane Kunst. Did I say that right?
Close.
Okay. Diane McCracken. Dylan Cross. Eric Gilbert. Felicia Clay. Carla Ramos. Kimberly Smith. Luke Fuentes. Mark Fishman, did he, are you here?
No.
Robert Miller. Roberta Morris. Wayne Thompson. Is there anyone else that did not RSVP to my email that I missed? I have your certificate. No, okay, perfect. Mr. Thompson. And then can you guys kind of get in two lines and kind of, you know?
I don't know, they're gonna be able to see me anyway.
A chair? I'm kidding. And then Ben kind of just a little bit.
Item D has been deferred until our next meeting. Beyond the vote, Mrs. Thomas.
Board is asked to authorize President Hofeld to enter into an agreement with the Interface Engineering of Chicago with $34,500 for a facility hardening and disaster resiliency assessment. The study will assess the electrical backup needs for village facilities. The July tornado revealed critical weaknesses in the village's electrical redundancy. Interface will give the village cost-effective recommendations or solutions on how to upgrade the electrical backup power system. The board is asked to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $7,825, excuse me, and accept the lowest-cost proposal of $50,534.21 submitted by Urban Communications of Oak Forest, the lowest responsible bidder. The company will replace the village's existing firewalls that date from 2010 and will help repair the village's network for a new Cook County fiber interconnect connection in 2025. The board is asked to approve a second amendment to the letter of intent with Rabbit Ground LLC for the village-owned property at 30033025 Ridge Road. The board is asked.
183rd Street.
Yes. Sorry. 183rd Street. The board is asked to authorize President Hofeld to enter into incentive agreements with businesses at 18201, 18209 Dixie Highway, 18659, 18667 Dixie Highway, 18660, 18676 Dixie Highway, 17911 Harwood Avenue, 1914 to 1918 Ridge Road, 2048 Ridge Road, 2057 Ridge Road. The village has agreed to award up to $5,000 for business facade improvements. The funding comes from the American Rescue Plan Act, a federal program established during the pandemic. Board is asked to pass ordinance MC 1083, amending the Homewood Municipal Code Regarding Raffle Licenses. The revision sets the maximum price for each raffle license at $100 for single raffles and $10 for multiple or serial raffles. A fidelity bond will only be required when the aggregate price value is more than $5,000. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding due to utilizing a vendor through a cooperative purchasing program and approve the purchase of two Ford utility interceptors, one for the police department and the other for Public Works. The purchases are from Kerry Motors Fleet of Frankfurt through the suburban purchasing cooperative in the amount of $91,026 plus $24,000 for additional equipment and upfitting to the vehicles for a total of $115,026. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding due to the solicitation of direct vehicle quotes and approve the purchase of one Ford F-350 regular cab 4x2 from Curry Motors of Frankfurt in the amount of $35,673 and the purchase and installation of lighting, accessories, and equipment after purchase for a total amount not to exceed $16,000. The total purchase of the truck for Public Works is $51,673. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding due to a proprietary purchase, equipment standardization, manufacturer, repair, and authorized dealer/seller, technical nature of the item-making competition impractical, or will negate standardization. The board will be approving a contract with Metropolitan Industries of Romeoville, the vendor currently under contract or that serves as the village's designated vendor for system maintenance at a cost of $534,482 for system upgrades for water plant number one. The work will be replacing a motor control center that is 42 years old, a critical piece of equipment that is responsible for pumping 2.5 million gallons of water daily through the village's water system. This work is part of the village's five-year capital plan. The board is asked to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $26,000 and waive competitive bidding for programmable logic controller and communication upgrades due to a proprietary purchase, equipment standardization, manufacturer, repair, and authorized dealer or seller, technical nature of item makes competition impractical, or will negate standardization. The board will be agreeing to hire Metropolitan Industries of Romeoville for an amount not to exceed $145,461 for system maintenance.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to these matters? Not, trustee Willis. Trusty Harris Jones.
No.
Trusty Hyferman.
Hi, ma'am.
Trusty Mason.
Really quickly, just item A, I'm really happy to know that we're, you know, working on our resilience of all of the facilities. I wanted to know if the, if the engineering consultant will be considering renewable energy sources as part of our recommendations? And if not, couldn't that be something that's included for Aquah?
So that can be something that's on the table. Right now, we ask for all options. And so they're willing to work with us and bring everything to the table. So I'll definitely bring that up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Trusty Roman.
I just have a question about the ARPA funds. In our memo, it said that seven people applied and six qualified. I just was curious why, I don't know who the seventh is, but maybe are they, is there a timeframe on this? Are they limited to it? If there's something that they can fix with their plan? Can they resubmit? I just would hate to see a business lose out on the opportunity to take advantage of these funds. Do we know?
Ms. Miserys? Yeah.
Yeah, the seventh application, unfortunately, the work had already been completed.
Got it, okay.
And so, you know, and I could reach out to them again and see if there's any additional work they're doing, but it was completed prior to this program being in effect.
Okay, thank you.
Trusty Open.
Um, yes, I had a great meeting this afternoon with Mr. Aqua, Mr. Haney, and Mr. Burnham. Went through great detail about the water, water supply. And could you just give a two-minute overview, the way, I know it was quite detailed, but I think it's very important for people to understand what this, the transition that's going to be taking place, the communication that the 42-year-old system needed to have overall. I think it's important for people to understand because it's one of the bigger ticket items that's on our budget. So if you could take a moment, thank you.
Not a problem. Good evening. So when I was on boarded, we got the pleasure of doing a capital improvement plan, something I'm very familiar with from my past. So, meeting with staff, we started building out this plan. And a lot of things were brought to attention, primarily a lot of public works items that you'll see in the presentations coming forward. But one of the big ones was the MCC, which is the Motor Control Center for our pump station. Still learning a little bit about that, but from what I've been told, that is the heart of our system. We have five pumps there. Aging MCC, which is again, is the controls for how pumps turn on and turn off. They alternate through each other. Our water plant station one provides pressures to the west and east side of town. They fill our towers, keep pressure consistent. And currently, right now, the system is aging. The brain of the operation, the PLC, if you will, it's obsolete. When we started looking around to see for a replacement, you could find one on eBay, but that's not very reliable. So we built this program out. We have a big history with Metropolitan Industries of Romeoville. They're one of our primary calls for when we have system maintenance. And they're first to the table with really quick delivery times. We do vet it. We do reach out to other vendors in the community and get pricing, but they've been very consistent. And pricing, it came in under budget. And, uh, pricing, it came in under budget. And, uh, we're excited about that. We're, uh, doing as much as we can with that moving forward when we can. So, um, it's a great opportunity. There's there's some safety things that that didn't touch on. Uh, part of this project is going to be the automatic transfer switch, uh, which is going to touch on our hardening. Uh, when power is, uh, dropped out, comm ed power is dropped out, the generator will automatically transfer over. That's transfer switch is not very consistent, if you will. Sometimes it kicks on and sometimes we have to actually manually crank it. And when we put our staff in that situation and manually crank it, there's opportunities for arc flash. Uh, again, it's it's safety, you know, uh, life. So, um, this is capturing all of the things that we need to take care of our system to make sure that we're secure and hard. So. Any questions? Did they answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Very important, but also, um, you pointed out something fantastic is that it was like it came in under budget as well.
Correct.
That's how that is. So it was originally we budgeted five sixty, came in five forty-three.
Correct.
Even better. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, again, compliments to you, Josh. Uh, I was, uh, on this board many, many years ago when our water system failed because the SCADA system went down.
Right.
So pay attention to that as well. And, uh, I thank you for being proactive on this.
You're welcome.
With that, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
Don't move. Okay.
Been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Opit. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyferman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
Hi.
Trustee Roman.
Hi.
Trustee Opit.
Hi.
The consent agenda is approved. New business. Ms. Zakowski, it's all yours.
So first, I wanted to direct you to, there was an updated memo that was placed in front of each of you. This, there was an error in the number provided for the statutory minimum amount on the third page. Um, so the prior numbers listed there crossed out and the correct number is, um, entered. I apologize for that oversight. Um, all the other figures in the memo are correct and the corrected numbers will be addressed in the presentation tonight. We'll get the, um, agenda on the website updated as well. So we're here tonight to discuss the twenty twenty-four real estate tax levy. It's always kind of a good refresher, um, on what a tax levy is and how is it set? So a tax levy is the amount of money a taxing body can request from the collective group of property taxpayers in a specific area, so here in Homewood. All taxing agencies levy for their share of property taxes. Um, because Homewood is a non-home rule community, we fall under the property tax extension limitation law or referred to as P T L. So what P T L does is it limits the increase the village can make to our real estate tax levy annually for certain, under, with certain categories that fall under that P T L. Um, under P T L, the tax levy is allowed to increase from the previous year's final tax extension based on the lesser of five percent or the increase in the Consumer Price Index for the year preceding the levy. So this year, the actual C P I change was three point three five percent. So our recommendation for the twenty twenty-four levy is to capture that full three point three five percent. And also, under P T L, uh, the village is allowed to add an increase for new construction. So new construction can include new builds, newly annexed areas, recovered TIF valuations. Uh, being an established and mostly built-out community, the village estimates a conservative half percent of new construction. But this year, the South Gate TIF has come to an end. So we are able to capture an additional one percent of new construction as those property tax dollars come back to the village's front fund that were previously going into the TIF. So our total new construction, uh, for the twenty twenty-four levy is one and a half percent. So that's the combination of the two, the three point three five percent change in C P I plus the one and a half percent for new construction, uh, brings the total increase under P T L over the prior year's levy at four point eight five percent. So dollar-wise, that, um, translates to about seven million dollars of proposed tax levy under P T L, which is the four point eight five percent increase over the prior year, which was six point seven million dollars. Uh, so as we start to set the levy, so we've got our seven million dollars to work with, now we need to kind of put it in the bucket. So we always start with pension funding. The state pension code states that the village's police and fire pension funds are to be funded at ninety percent by the year twenty forty. Our current funding levels are listed on the screen. So fire is currently funded at seventy-two point seven percent and police at fifty-five point nine percent. So we are recommending, village staff is recommending funding the statutory minimum, which is an amount that's calculated by the actuary that's engaged by each of the state consolidated pension funds. So the actuaries have calculated, uh, statutory minimum amount to levy for the police pension of about two point six million and fire pension of roughly eight hundred and fifty-three thousand. Included included in the board packet was a letter from, letter and a report from both pension funds requesting that the village levy a higher amount. Uh, their requested amounts come from an actuarial valuation that was completed by Lotterback and Amen. And those amounts would get both funds closer to the hundred percent funded by twenty forty rather than ninety percent funded at twenty forty. It would get them closer to a hundred percent funded. At this time, village's staff's position, village staff's position is to continue to levy the amount calculated by the state consolidated pension funds, which is what the dollar amounts are on the screen. Because we're working to meet our police and fire pension obligations, plugging in those amounts is the first step in setting the levy. And that ends up being approximately fifty percent of our total P T L limit of the seven million dollars. After we fund the police and fire pension obligations, the remaining levies allocated towards a number of other categories, uh, such as I R F pension, social security and Medicare employer costs, audit expenses, risk management, insurance premium, and then all other day-to-day operating expenses, which would include salaries, benefits, um, and services. The final levy under the P T L will end up being approximately fifty percent towards operations and fifty percent towards our police and fire pensions. This graph is one that we've shared, um, over the years as more and more dollars have been needing to be allocated towards police and fire pensions in order to get us closer to that ninety percent funded rate by twenty forty. So red is the levy dollars that go towards day-to-day operations and blue is the levy dollars for police and fire pensions. Beginning in about twenty eighteen, less dollars, they kind of cross. So less dollars were being allocated towards our day-to-day operations and more towards police and fire pension funds as we were, have been kind of inching our way towards meeting that state mandate. The tax levy dollars that come to the village for operations is only approximately ten percent of our total general fund, uh, revenue in the village's twenty-seven million dollar budget. So while in the grand scheme, ten percent doesn't seem like a significant number, it is two point seven million dollars that the village would have to find elsewhere if we did not receive that through property taxes. We are very fortunate, though, that we do have many diverse revenue streams and we rely much more heavily on sales tax than property tax, which is why there's always a strong focus on continued economic development. Debt payment obligations and the tax levy. So once we've covered everything that falls under that P T L, that maximum seven million dollars that we can levy, we are allowed to put debt payments, um, onto the levy as well. So because they are not governed under P T L. So debt service is the amount that we need to pay the principal and interest on outstanding debt. We had, we, the village had made its final principal and interest payments for the twenty twenty bond from the, from the twenty twenty-two tax bills. So last year, when I was standing before you, we had no debt service to present on the levy. Uh, we did issue a general obligation bond in the amount of two point six million dollars this past September. So the debt service cost for that issuance is approximately just under seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's the amount we need to add to this current levy in order to be able to meet our debt service payments in the coming year. So with the debt service payment or debt service amount, our total recommended twenty twenty-four tax levy is seven point eight million dollars. There, that is an increase of just over thirteen percent from the prior year. But again, that's mostly due to adding the, putting the return of debt back onto our tax levy. And that debt was needed to fund the village's extensive capital project list, um, to update and maintain our infrastructure and equipment around the village. Because of the overall tax levy is increasing more than five percent, we will be holding a truth and taxation hearing. Um, it will be held if the board approves, directs us to. It will be held on December tenth, uh, just before the regular board meeting. This visual, I know it's a little bit tiny, but what this shows is kind of real-time tax bills from twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-two. So twenty twenty-two is the second, middle column, twenty twenty-three is the last column. It's showing for each of the four different townships located within Homewood. So our Homewood's average across all four townships is approximately ten percent of a resident's total property tax bill last year, which was a slight decrease from the prior year, which was closer to eleven percent. So this means that if your property tax bill was eight thousand dollars, eight, approximately eight hundred dollars of your annual property taxes paid come back to the village to cover, uh, the cost for quality amenities and high-level services that are provided by the village. So again, while the return of the debt to the village, uh, overall twenty twenty-four tax levy, um, increases the overall twenty twenty-four tax levy, the increase to residence property tax bill should remain reasonable and the village's portion of the residence overall property tax bill may increase slightly, but we should still be right around this ten percent average. So tonight, the village board, we are asking you to approve, um, our recommendation to use the state's consolidated pension funds actuarial calculation to meet that required statutory minimum that will help continue to move us closer to that ninety percent funded by twenty forty. And we also ask that, um, you give us some direction to publish a truth and taxation hearing notice due to the overall increase under P T, the overall increase on the tax levy. Uh, that hearing again would take place prior to the December tenth board. I'm happy to take any questions. Can anyone make this evening?
Thank you. Nice job. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Board comments? Trustee Willis.
Uh, no, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you for your understanding.
No questions. Trustee Mason.
No question.
Trustee Roman.
I don't have any questions, but I hope that, um, our community also watches this, gets this information because I think that there's, um, a lot of confusion around this topic. Um, and we can only provide the information in so many ways. So I just, you do such a great job of explaining it. As you were explaining all this, I thought, I wish we could somehow get this same information to every single resident so that their questions are answered. And I hope people, if you, if you guys are communicating with people in the community, tell them to come to that meeting on December tenth if they have questions about this and and direct the questions right here where they can get the answers.
And I will say, you know, last year we put together a tax levy graphic that we had. I know we have, it's currently posted on the website. We'll update the numbers, but the story's essentially still the same. Um, and maybe we can share that on social media too, as we get closer to the truth and taxation hearing.
Great. Yeah, that one graph, it it always stands out to me every time it's shown to us that the tax levy is going more and more towards pensions and that we are obligated under, we're required by the state to fund those. So we really don't have a choice. So thank you very much for everything.
Trustee Opit.
Very succinctly put. Um, and I agree that everyone, get the word out, December tenth, to please attend because it is confusing to see. And then also on the website, when you start to see how the numbers cross, it's not in our, in our favor. So the more we can get that information out to people and they have them understand what the big picture is. So please get that word out. And I'm so glad that I know it'll be on social media as well. So thank you. But thank you for, um, breaking this down for us.
As you had said so well. Thankfully, our sales tax, uh, returns succeed our, our real estate tax levy. Economic development is key to it all. Thank you, Miss Maseras. And, uh, last year's debt, we were debt-free. We had capital needs. We had to issue those, uh, bonds. I, I have poor debt, uh, but I had gone along with it and I understand the need for it. So with that being said, may I have a motion to direct staff to publish a truth and taxation hearing notice for December tenth?
Don't move. Second.
Been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Opit. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyferman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
Hi.
Trustee Roman.
Hi.
Trustee Opit.
I'm sorry.
You can.
All right. And as our attorney had pointed out, uh, we should also have a motion that, uh, we recommend using the state's consolidated funds actuarial calculation. May I have a motion to that effect, officer?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Hyferman, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyferman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
Hi.
Trustee Roman.
Hi.
Trustee Opit.
Hi.
Motion is approved. General board discussion. Let's begin.
I'm just congratulations again to all of you who committed to your time and participating in the Civic Academy. I hope it was enjoyable in addition to being a part of it. Congrats.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Yes. I would also like to congratulate all of you all and thank you for coming out to our meeting and please continue to come out. Appreciate all of you.
Trustee Hyferman.
And feel free to reach out to any of us because what you just completed is really just the beginning. And I hope you get involved. Um, I also want to just congratulate everybody involved in this incredible achievement that we achieved this week at the beginning of the period. Um, it's been a, a decade-long journey and God, I am really happy to see that it was gonna. Thank you for listening.
Trustee Mason.
Uh, I want to congratulate all of you all on the completion of the civics academy. I hope that it continues to grow. I think it's a wonderful thing to all accomplish. And I actually intend to take part in it moving forward. I, I want to echo Jay's sentiments in regards to Wayne Creek. I think it's, uh, uh, great that it's open. It's, uh, well-received and, uh, hopeful for good things from.
Trustee Roman.
Yes, I always love a feel-good meeting and I think that this was a feel-good meeting. We had, um, I'm very excited that we were able to give so much to the Homewood P T A from the Chili Cook-Up. We have a new police officer, new staff members, and congratulations to all of you that completed the civics academy. I love that that program has been implemented and I love that there's so many people interested in it. I hope you all enjoyed it and that, um, it sparked your interest. And we have committees and events and lots of other things that you can volunteer with if you want to get more involved. And thank you all very much.
Trustee Opit.
I would like to also echo congratulations to the Citizens Civic Academy. Um, I know it took a lot of weeks out, um, and you met on a Wednesday, but congratulations. Um, I hope you have a better understanding of local government and that we are a council manager form of government and how important that is and and how police, fire, and all the wonderful departments, um, work together. So, um, congratulations on that time. Um, I also want to say, I would like, so our budget today, or excuse me, our claims list today was over a million dollars. And think about how our property taxes come in and how, what percentage that we have and how we have to utilize those dollars, um, how important it is and what a great job staff does in using those dollars. Because if I calculated it correctly, right, if we get a million dollars, we have a million dollars for our claims list, we got what, two point seven million in property taxes? So that's why economic development is huge. Um, the money goes quickly, but we get great service. And hopefully this is where you want to stay as well. So, um, home sweet home, what always. So thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, just a reminder, there are two more tree leaf pickups. Uh, if you have leaves, write them up, put them in the, uh, paper craft bags, just bring them to the curb, no stickers required. And, uh, those leaf pickups will be tomorrow, the thirteenth of November, and also a week from tomorrow, the twentieth of November. One other note, there will be, uh, the tree committee is doing a memorial tree planting on Saturday. Uh, they are honoring the memory of Glenn Merritt at ten o'clock at Willow School, Todd Beal at ten thirty at Willow School, and Jim Wright at eleven o'clock at Willow School. So you're more than welcome to attend. Uh, it's been a good meeting. I want to thank Jamie Zakowski again, uh, for explaining things. And to those of you who were in the Citizens Academy, you're part of Homewood now. Come to our meetings. Come on. And to those of you who were in the Citizens Academy, you're part of Homewood. Come to our meetings, come out and see us. With that being said, may I have a motion to enter an executive session to discuss pending litigation? So then moved by trustee Mason, second by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Hyferman.
Hi.
Trustee Mason.
Hi.
Trustee Roman.
Hi. Trustee Opitz.
We'll take a short recess. Thank you all for being here.